Lee, we good?
We're good.
Awesome. Good morning. This is the New York State Gaming Commission Rulemaking Public Hearing Concerning the Proposed Adoption of New Controlled Therapeutic Medication Rules, published in the State Register on December 4, 2013. The Commission has proposed the adoption of per se regulatory thresholds for 24 approved equine medications and has proposed amending the Commission's restricted time periods, which prohibit the administration of equine drugs for various specific time periods before a horse's next race. Participating with me today are several of my Commission colleagues. Dr. Palmer, Equine Medical Director.
Good morning.
Ron Okrum, Director of the Division of Horse Racing and Paramutual Wagering, and Rick Caddell, Assistant Counsel. We will later be joined by Ed Burns, who's running a little bit late on the train today. The Commission has received many requests to provide testimony and written documentation. We look forward to hearing your information and concerns. A written record will also be prepared of this public hearing, together with materials submitted in lieu of testimony today. This will be available upon request. For those who are unable to participate today, the Commission will continue to take written submissions as part of the rulemaking process through next Monday, January 27. It is my understanding that there has been a lot of interaction with interested persons and the Gaming Commission staff and our longtime scientific consultant to ensure that everyone is as fully informed as possible and ready to provide important and useful testimony today. I would like to specifically acknowledge Joe Feraldo for all of his work in organizing the majority of persons who wish to speak here today, and Dr. Benson for coming today to present the national proposal on behalf of the Racing Medication and Testing Consortium. The Commission is very interested in receiving testimony. This testimony, together with other information available for our consideration, will be used to determine what amendments of our equine drug rules may be appropriate in order to continue our tradition in New York of having the best equine drug rules and the best equine drug enforcement program and laboratory in the country. Each of you who testify today have been invited to speak no more than 10 minutes. We will try to accommodate those who, in advance, have requested additional time. If you feel you're unable to communicate something important during your testimony today, I'd like to reiterate that the public comment period for these rules and rule proposals will remain open through next Monday. This includes if, for instance, you hear something that somebody says during the process of the hearing and you feel necessary to supplement your statements, to address that information. The purpose of this hearing is informational gathering. It is not intended to be a debate. However, Commission representatives may interrupt you with questions, but we will try to hold them until the end. Please finish your prepared remarks in a timely manner and, if possible, leave time for any questions that you might anticipate. Does anyone else wish to make an opening statement? In that case, Mr. Phil Langley? Mr. Langley, will you please raise your right hand and respond to the following. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to present is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Please state your name, address, and affiliation, if any, for the record, and then proceed with your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Philip Langley. I'm President of the United States Trotting Association, have been for the last 11 years. I'm from Chicago, Illinois. Over the last, since 19, well, actually during high school, I worked at the racetracks to pay my way through Dartmouth, and I've been working at the tracks ever since. So I have a long history as Director of Racing, Racing Secretary, Treasurer, and my affiliation with the USDA, which gets involved in everything. So with that, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to present the USDA side of this idea, which has become a little bit controversial. In my opinion, it maybe shouldn't have, but it did. And part of it is the fault of the USDA and the harness racing industry in itself, because when the rules were first proposed, we didn't quite grasp the significance of changing the clenbuterol and the corticosteroid time schedule. We were a little late from the starting gate on that, and it wasn't until we got several complaints from our constituents that by putting in these timeframes, it would actually eliminate the use of clenbuterol and the use of corticosteroids in harness racing. In September 17, I believe it was, Mike Tanner and I went and addressed the RMTC meeting and gave them our objections to the clenbuterol and the corticosteroid administration. The problem is that, and when we were at RMTC, we got the impression that while most of the people on the RMTC board are thoroughbreds, once we reminded them, they did realize that harness racing raced on pretty much a weekly basis, every seven to 10 days. And when they passed these rules, they were pretty much passed, or not passed them, when they proposed them, they were pretty much concerned with the thoroughbreds and quarter horses getting big doses of clenbuterol and building up muscle. And it came as a surprise to us, because we thought we had been using these medications the way they were supposed to be used. Almost all of the research material you read says that clenbuterol should be used for bronchial dilation, and I have, you know, I have several journals here that show it. Even Dr. Palmer, in a letter to Tom Charters, acknowledged that it's good as a bronchial dilator, but he does think that there's an opportunity to overuse it as a steroid. And, you know, that's one of the arguments that we have. We've never, never seen it being used in harness racing that way. If you didn't race for two weeks, it still wouldn't make much difference, because the use of clenbuterol for a steroid doesn't really build up into muscle until at least six days of consistent giving it. And we have many sciences here that can explain that a lot better than I can. But basically, we got caught looking on two drugs that had been used by us as therapeutic medicines for years. And the clenbuterol, we'd never had a problem with. Most jurisdictions, we use it post-race, give it for two days, then are five days off, and then after they race, maybe give it again for a day or two to help clear the bronchial passages, and it's worked very well. As far as corticosteroids, we've been using those differently than the proposal. The proposal is you can't use them within seven days of racing, or eight days, I forgot which it is, but we've been using them for years at three, four days, five days sometimes, depending on what the particular medication is. And over those years, one of the arguments is that by giving it, you should have eight or 10 days to see how it affects the horse. And that's probably true to some extent, more so in thoroughbreds and in harness. But we've had, as I say, we've been giving it for years, and the breakdowns in harness racing are minimal, if any, you know, almost, you almost can't find them. In Ohio, for example, over four years, with five racetracks going, they've had 10 catastrophic breakdowns in four years. That's less than half of one a track per year, and that's pretty, pretty constant through the industry. Now, it's been said that, yeah, but there are other kinds of injuries that occur because of that. All I can tell you is that harness has 7,500 foals a year, thoroughbreds have 22,000 foals a year, and we race more harness races than there are thoroughbred races. So we believe that the horses are completely different. We realize that physiologically, probably they're the same, but as far as the physical characteristics and the way they're raced, it's not the same. It's, I guess, you see all kinds of different horses. A horse, in our opinion, is not a horse, just because, it's not a horse, it's not a horse just because he's a horse. You see all kinds of different breeds, and ours, we think ours are more durable, and that we think that the rules should be different. We're 100% in favor of uniform rules. I think the rules proposed for the thoroughbreds are fine, no problem whatsoever. And we ought to remember that the way, the reason we have uniform rules is for the good of the trainers, more than anything else. It's the trainers so they can go from one jurisdiction to another and not fear that they're giving the wrong medicine or at the wrong time, and they can feel safe in racing their horses under the medication rules. We think there are already a lot of differences. I mean, we have detention barns for Lasix in harness where they have to be in the barns four hours ahead of time. I can't imagine the thoroughbreds doing that. Their nervous system, I don't think, would take it. We have, depending on where you are, two to four hours in the paddock before they race. And again, I think that the thoroughbreds couldn't do that, and if you're going to have uniform rules, it ought to be uniform for everybody. So I say that we want uniform rules for harness, and we should have harness, uniform rules for thoroughbreds. I've spoken on these topics to several states. I've been in Pennsylvania, met with the Pennsylvania Harness Racing Commission. They're not going to change the harness rule. Ohio has said that they're not going to change their rule unless harness is accommodated. Illinois, I've testified before twice, and being from Illinois, I think that's my loser. I've won the debate but lost the vote there every time. So I think that basically, we're not asking for anything new. We're not asking, RMTC put out a paper not too long ago saying that we were trying to get the standards lowered. We're not trying to get any standards lowered. All we want to do is be left the way we are, and we see no reason not to be. It's worked fine for several years on both clenbuterol and corticosteroids. The list of 24 drugs, I can't really speak to. I don't know whether 24, 30, 16, I don't know what the right number is. That's one for the veterinarians and the scientists to decide. That's beyond my ability to do it. We are concerned about the violation of an administration time being a penalty. Sometimes you get a penalty without a positive. What happens if it goes the other way? I know this summer, we had one in Illinois where the veterinarian followed all the rules, gave it in the proper timeframe, and the positive still came back. In a case like that, if they can prove they gave it in time, do you reverse the penalty? I don't know, but it just seems to me like that gets kind of complicated. As I said, nearly every research paper that I've seen says it should be used as a bronchial aid, not as a steroid substitute. We don't even know how much dosage is really needed for muscle partitioning. I think that the problem with it is that we haven't had enough research to concretely answer some of these questions. This summer, we've asked the people at New Bolton to do some research and determine, number one, whether giving it two days and then having five days off creates a steroidal effect like it does when you give it six days in a row twice a day, or 20 days in a row for twice a day. And we're going to see whether or not it really has an effect, period. There is a little bit of a question whether or not clenbuterol is, does what it's supposed to do. When we went to RMTC, we got a good reception. I'd have to say they were very fair. They talked about looking for alternatives to clenbuterol, and they didn't think there'd be a big problem on the corticosteroids. They could adjust the time, and it would work okay. Their immediate thought was albuterol would be maybe a substitute, but since then, research and talk and discussions have kind of thrown that one out the window. Albuterol doesn't seem to be a good substitute for several reasons, one being it's very, very difficult to administer. Clenbuterol's quite easy to administer. So we really don't have an alternative at the moment if we can't use clenbuterol. Let's see. Well, as I say, we've used these things for the last 10 years, as far as I know, maybe more, and we have absolutely no problem with them. And when I say absolutely no problem with them, doesn't mean we, on occasion, don't have a positive test or something, but for the most part, it's 99% clear with clenbuterol. And the corticosteroids, we just think that the history of use showing no breakdowns, no adverse effects, and horses being able to race 30 to 40 times a year, in fact, the highest money-winning horse of all time has now started 198 times. And I don't know whether he uses any of these things or not, but the breed is just, is just so durable. They don't even look alike, if you look at them. If you go out in the field and have half thoroughbreds and half harness, you can tell them apart. It's just, they're just different. And physiologically, they're not different, but, or at least I don't know that they are. But physically, I know they're different. I just, you can see it, you know what the results are of racing, and so what we're asking for is either separate rules for harness or some kind of accommodation for harness on clenbuterol, corticosteroids, and other people will get more into the 24 drugs and the violation of administration time. I've kind of rushed this because I didn't want to take too much of your time today. But anyway, that's basically my spiel.
I appreciate it. Dr. Palmer?
No, not this time, thanks.
You mentioned that you had a bunch of articles. Would you like to submit those to us?
I can send them to you. One of them you'll probably hear from is Dr., we're going to hear from Dr. McKeever, he's here. A couple of the others are just letters that I've received from different places, and I'd be happy to send them to you, but I'll have to do that when I get home.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Joe Feraldo, President, Standard Breed Owners Association of America. Accompanying him, Mr. Christopher Witstruck. If you would both be so kind as to raise your right hands and respond to the following. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to present is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
I do.
Please, for the record, will you both state your names, addresses, and affiliations for the record, and then proceed with your testimony?
You first.
Chris Witstruck, 33 Park Circle, New Hyde Park, New York, Director of the Standard Breed Owners Association of New York.
Joseph A. Feraldo, 125-10 Queensville, Lard Q Gardens, New York. I am President of the Standard Breed Owners Association of New York, a Director and former Chairman of the Board of the United States Trotting Association. I am neither a veterinarian nor a scientist. I just want to share some insights regarding the sport and the industry that may be helpful to you in determining how to regulate the administration of therapeutic medications and procedures in the standard bred racehorse. For years, the regulated use of therapeutic medication under substantially the same rules as are in place today has served the interests of the horse, the horseman, and the state and the general public quite well. Under the decades-long vigilant supervision of Dr. George Malin, the state test lab has served to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the participants and safeguard the integrity of this industry. By way of example, in 2012, there were 125,428 thoroughbred and harness horse starts in New York State. The number of post-race drug positives called by the former racing board was 84, or roughly 6 1/100 of 1%. Of this infinitesimal number, much more than half were for clinical overages of permissible therapeutic medications. The positives in prior years are consistent with this data. Despite what you may have read in the sensationalized articles in the mainstream press, we simply don't have a drugging or doping problem in New York. How did we get to this point? We got to this point because of the government's response to a spate of catastrophic breakdowns occurring two years ago at Aqueduct's thoroughbred meet. Many of the rule change proposals under consideration find their genesis in the recommendations made in a task force report investigating that high incidence of thoroughbred breakdowns. The proposed rules are also the outgrowth of recommendations made by a group known as the RMTC. In plain terms, it has drafted a compilation of rules it feels best suited for thoroughbred racing, and has proffered them to the racing commissions around the country as answering a purported need for uniform standards, without any deference to other racing breeds. The standard bred interests in this country are united in a belief that the health of the horse and the integrity of the sport are of paramount importance. We are also united in the belief that rules which were crafted for thoroughbred interests, for thoroughbred interests, to ostensibly correct problems exclusive to the thoroughbred industry, not fail to address the needs of the harness horse and horse industry, but actually pose a clear danger to continue, to the continued existence of both. While equines, standard breeds are from a select, closed gene pool that race at different gates, speeds, and over different surfaces than other racing breeds, and have markedly different training regimens than thoroughbreds, they are simply different in physiology, husbandry, and employment and service. Balancing what's best to keep the racing standard bred healthy and competitive against practices that might needlessly improve performance is a mission that can't be accomplished without consideration of the unique nature of our horses and industry. How resilient is the standard bred racehorse? Consider that the horse with the most wins in North America for 2013 was one called Anvil Raider N. The seasoned campaigner racked up 23 wins for the year, and he did it at the remarkable age of 14. Another 14-year-old favorite, Yonkers Raceway's Forrest Vic A., regularly graced our Saturday night card, and in 2013, he took a mark of 150 and 3 on December 28 at the Meadowlands Racetrack. These and other age crusaders typify the tremendous durability of our breed. There are few thoroughbreds competing past age 8, and the majority are retired well younger than that. In sum, many of our standard breeds are racing years after equivalent-aged thoroughbreds are put out to pasture. On the whole, standard breeds race much longer, more frequently, and, most importantly, sustain almost none of the nasty breakdown incidents experienced with other breeds of racing. Again, in 2012, there were 29,100 thoroughbred starts opposed to a whopping 96,328 harness starts in New York. While 139 thoroughbred deaths occurred, there were only 17 standard bred deaths. In other words, thoroughbred mortality has more than eight times that of the standard bred, despite the fact that there were more than three times the standard bred starts in New York. Of the handful of harness horse deaths, several were due to conditions such as intestinal lymphoma, twisted colon, lung aneurysms. One of the 17 deaths was as a result of a loose horse running into a fence. In sum, a small number of the harness horse deaths are, even a smaller amount, were euthanized due to skeletal fractures. Simply therapeutic medication plays no role in causing standard bred racehorse deaths and assuredly prevents an immeasurable amount of catastrophic illnesses and injuries. Thus, it is truly and potentially tragically ironic that this commission is being asked by RMTC and others to severely limit the practicing veterinarian's therapeutic pharmacological armamentarium. The request is being made to cure identifying problems that exist with thoroughbreds, despite the absence of similar problems with standard breeds, and, more importantly, with perhaps a reckless disregard for the significantly negative effects the proposal might have on harness racing. Consider the proposal to change the administration time of clenbuterol. Given the dusty and enclosed conditions where racehorses are maintained, this is a useful and necessary bronchial dilator and expectorant. The withdrawal time under your current rules is 96 hours. The proposal to change that time to 14 days is very debatable. Very debatable because the underlying premise is that consistent administration of this drug may have a repartitioning effect, and thus is being abused in the thoroughbred industry as a substitute for anabolic steroids. Unlike thoroughbreds, however, standard breeds race on a fairly consistent weekly basis. A four-day withdrawal time ensures that the competing standard bred cannot receive a regimen of clenbuterol sufficient to allow it to achieve the illicit effects which are alleged, but still receive the therapeutic benefit. Thus, by imposing a 14-day withdrawal time on harness racing, you would not only be remedying a medication problem that simply doesn't exist, but would in fact cause significant problems by denying an essential therapeutic medication administered to keep the competing horses healthy. Similarly, the proposal to change the withdrawal times for permissible corticosteroids from five to seven days simply removes legitimate therapeutic treatments for the standard bred. Under the proposal, while the usual thoroughbred races with weeks between starts and can receive treatments, the standard bred campaigners who are not part of the catastrophic breakdown problem cannot, because we race every seven, every seven days. Quite disturbing is the absolute prohibition via implementation of zero thresholds for all but 24 therapeutic medications. When I last counted, I believe there were 64 in our rulebook currently. Again, by turning the clock back, on both scientific advancement and current veterinary practice, you are permitting the competing thoroughbred with its customary three or more weeks between starts to use banned substances with impunity and deny the same helpful therapeutics to the competing standard bred who is regularly in the entry box once a week. The old cliche is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The corollary in this instance is that if you do fix it, certainly it may break. Remedying a nonexistent standard bred breakdown problem by denying beneficial, curative, and healing treatments by veterinarians will simply cause a cadre of less-than-healthy trotters and paces in New York. The last thing we need to see in this business is a task force report by someone from the New York Times now detailing harness racing breakdowns in New York as a result of what you may be doing here. I heard Phil say that we want uniform rules. We certainly do. I think that the people in RMTC and RCI are trying to achieve that, and that's fine. But back in 1979, I hate to say this, I argued a case in the United States Supreme Court. And in that court, I argued for, there was an equal protection argument I made. I said the two industries, thoroughbred and harness, need to be regulated identically. The United States Supreme Court said, Barchi, who was my client, and Barry, who was Chairman of the racing board at the time, they said, "Barchi has not shown that the two industries should be identically regulated in all respects. He has not convinced us," and that was my failing, "that the legislative facts," and in this case, you could substitute the word "scientific facts," "on which the classification is apparently based" could not reasonably be conceived to be true by governmental decision makers. It was not the state's burden to prove, by resort to current empirical proof, Barchi's bare assertions that thoroughbred and harness racing should be treated identically. Now, we want, we do want uniform rules. Now, if I take the wisdom from the United States teaching, or corrective teaching, to myself, then there is a predicate for treating us differently and forgiving us uniform rules in our industry. The USDA is now working towards that goal. And we welcome a study that is about to be done in Pennsylvania with actual racehorses racing at Chester, it's now Harris Philadelphia Park, on one of these drugs in particular, because I don't really see, and other people will obviously speak better to this issue than myself, on the science side, I don't see a study that proves or disproves- than myself, on the science side, I don't see a study that proves or disproves what is alleged by RMTC with regard to the repartitioning effects, certainly as we use this drug in harness racing. I've heard suggestions about using substitute drugs such as albuterol. In one of my submissions on the CD that I gave you, one of the papers shows that clenbuterol is an FDA-approved drug. The efficacy of albuterol, its efficacy is unproven, the report concludes. Now, this is not just me talking or a horseman talking, saying we prefer to use clenbuterol, it's much easier to use. The other one requires a nebulizer, requires a different type of treatment regimen, it's a multiple treatment, the sequence of administration is on a daily basis, and it is, albuterol is not efficacious as a bronchial dilator. These other 24 rules that we have present other problems to me as an attorney and could present problems to this board. One, flu nixin has been dropped to 24 hours, it used to be bute was 24, flu nixin was 24, then there was a switch, and now we have flu nixin at 24. We wrote to you back, and I think it's part of the materials that you have, saying that this was a big mistake. It's my understanding that 20 nanograms of flu nixin, 24 hours, which is recommended by RMTC, is a number that even RMTC's data indicates is not exactly correct. The California Horse Racing Board, I believe, there's a paper by Dr. Kinch, which is in my papers, Sam's author and Dr. Stanley, that shows that flu nixin should be a 50-nanogram drug, not 20 or 25 as recommended by RMTC. Now, it's my understanding that there've been some actual empirical tests done with the cooperation of a thoroughbred trainer in New York State. And at the numbers that we currently have, if we followed, even on the thoroughbred side, if you followed the RMTC guidelines, you're going to have a ton of positives. And in the study, at least from what I hear from the thoroughbred people, is that 20% of the horses that were put in this control test came up positive. And my fear is you're going to have a lot of false positives because the data is, the underlying data is incorrect. Clenbuterol, clenbuterol, I don't know where there is proof of this anabolic effect. Certainly, in our game, there isn't. And if the thoroughbred industry, if there is reason to believe that they are abusing this drug, and you want to go to 14 days on clenbuterol for thoroughbreds, that's fine. If it satisfies the need that this commission has, that's fine. My other concern about clenbuterol is right now, unless I'm mistaken, Dr. Malin, who has been recognized as an expert in this area for many years in this state, has a 20-nanogram per ml threshold for clenbuterol in plasma. It is recommended, according to the chart that I have from RMTC, that that number go to 140 nanograms per milliliter in urine. I understand that the differential between the two mediums, plasma versus now the proposal to do this in urine, that's going to lead to a lot of false positives. There's a paper here by, in part of my materials, and I think the professors, please don't cross-examine me on this, the professors will do a much better job on this than I can. But there is a paper by a gentleman named Kinch that's part of the CD that I provided you, and on page five of that Kinch paper, it indicates that at 13.5 days, a dosage of clenbuterol detected in urine at a four times standard deviation is one that's going to get you a lot of false positives. You're going to have people giving clenbuterol beyond the 14 days, and I guarantee you that I will be sitting before this gaming commission with some horseman who followed your rule and who was called for a clenbuterol positive when he followed specifically the day parameters of your rules, the same way you're experiencing this with flu nixin now. I guarantee you that's going to happen. Now, that doesn't do any good for the industry. It doesn't do any good for someone from the New York Times to be reporting this when factually the underlying predicate for that call is totally and completely incorrect. It hurts the industry, it hurts the horseman's reputation, makes him look like he's doping a horse when he's, all he's doing is following your rules. You're walking into a situation which is extremely dangerous for the board and for the industry. Now, if you want to destroy the industry, that may be a way to do this. Limit the use of all of these drugs, cut down the number of horses that can race on a weekly basis in standard bred racing, cut down the racing until you just move us right out of the picture, and substitute a racing board with a casino control commission. And no reason for a gaming commission per se that incorporates both, because there won't be a second one. Other states have been asked to look at this. I don't, I believe that Illinois has yet made a decision. Pennsylvania has certainly not made a decision, and hats off to Dr. Robinson and the USTA for agreeing at least tentatively to fund a study that actually gets us data that we can point to and say, "You know what? We were wrong," or, "You know what? We were right." That study will commence, I believe, in April or May of this year, and I think we should be very, very cautious in making this kind of a change. And that's basically all I have to say. My other concern is, on some of the data, and unfortunately, I've been getting too much of an education on it, but yet not enough to qualify me as an expert, I'm concerned about the RMTC's confidentiality policy. And how does someone check on the, on the underlying data? The chart that I was provided showed, of the 24 drugs, I believe 19 of them did not have a reference that was peer-reviewed. That's significant. You're making a decision on the basis of science. All I'm asking you to do is to make sure that you're very comfortable with the science, you're very comfortable with the way harness racing is practiced in this state, the husbandry, what the horsemen do, the number of weeks that we race as opposed to our thoroughbred counterparts, and the fact that we do not have these catastrophic breakdowns. You'll hear from some of the veterinarians who work in the field who will tell you that there are times when there is even more breakdowns on brood mares and farms than they see in harness racehorses on a racetrack. Our numbers are almost insignificant. And the last Aratoga meet, if, unless I'm mistaken, and I could be, there were breakdowns. There were six breakdowns at the thoroughbred tracks this year already. And if these are the guidelines that are being followed, then these guidelines are not accomplishing the goal. Isn't that really what we want to do? And maybe it is not the medication issue that corrects the problem with the catastrophic breakdowns in thoroughbred racing. That's all I have.
Mr. Wistrick, do you have anything?
No, not at all. Thank you very much.
Hold on.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Next up, we have Dr. Thomas Tobin from University of Kentucky Gluck Equine Research Center.
It would suggest to me that I make copies of my presentation available to you and supporting documentation.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to present is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes, I do.
Would you please state your name, address, and affiliation for the record, and then proceed with your testimony?
My name is Thomas Tobin, T-O-B-I-N. My address, I will give you my home address, is 5301 Bethel Road, Lexington, Kentucky, 40511, and I have been invited to appear here today on behalf of the USTA, U.S. Trotting I addressed the letter, my opinion letter, to Mike Tanner, Executive Vice President of the USTA. He was the individual I'd been in communication with. The first paragraph on page one outlines the background on why I'm here today. On page two of 27, I set forth my background as a veterinarian, pharmacologist, and toxicologist. I've been at the University of Kentucky for approaching 40 years. Early on in my career, I wrote Drugs of the Performance Horse. Shortly thereafter, at the invitation of the Kentucky Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association, I was asked to come up with a regulatory threshold, a cutoff in plasma, as it turned out, for furosemide or Lasix that would be equivalent to the four-hour detention barn system that was then in place. And I went ahead and did the work, and it's a little out of order, but if you go to page 25 on the thing, and you come up with a paper called "The Pharmacology of Furosemide in the Horse: Pharmacokinetics and Blood Levels of Furosemide After Intravenous Administration." I want to draw your attention carefully to a couple of points in that paper. If you pull up, it's way, way back at the end. It's attachment number 10, and it's one of the references from attachment number 10, which is, just keep going to the end of the document.
What was in the paper, Tom?
It's, I have it as number 84 because it's the 84th paper I wrote in racing chemistry. It's called Pharmacology of Furosemide. You have it in front of you? Yeah. If you look at the last sentence in the paragraph in the abstract, "The mean plasma level at four hours post-dosing was 9.6 nanograms per ml with a range of 4 to 19.4." That was the range in, I'll have to check, I believe, 47 horses, I did 47 horses. So I calculated the mean and standard deviation, and I specifically set forth the probability of finding furosemide plasma concentrations above 24.6 nanograms per ml at four hours after the AEP dose was estimated at less than 1,000. What I did there was, I did 47 horses, I calculated the probability of random overage. Anytime you have a regulatory threshold and you have a linked dose guideline, withdrawal time guideline, there is a statistical probability of exceeding that. And this is actually the first one that was ever done in the industry, I believe. I was careful to set forth that there is always a possibility of a person following the regulation exactly, and there is a statistical probability of exceeding it. That is something that is, in my opinion, essential in a defined regulatory threshold. One of the concerns I have, and the reason this is in here, is that I do not see that mathematical analysis, that careful statistical analysis in much of the, I haven't seen it for much of the work that has been presented. I'll put it to you like that, and I would be very happy to have it presented to me. Let's go back to the current matter. Let's flip to page 11 in my presentation where I give the summary. One of the rules of presentation is you present your message first, then you present the details, then you present the message again. Harness racing differs from thoroughbred racing in that it is extremely safe for horses. One equine death per 15,000 starts in Ohio, and as I understand it, broadly similar results from other jurisdictions. And this came as somewhat of a surprise to me, although I've been around the industry a long time. And if you move another three pages on, I have this graph. And what this shows is the risk, the probability of a horse dying in a harness race in Ohio is one in 15,000. It's an extremely rare event. If you happen to be racing in Australia, flat racing, thoroughbred racing, one in 2,000, and the curve goes way down here, and you have steeplechase racing, the chances of a horse dying acutely are one in 100 starting a cheap steeplechase race. And you will see in this curve the aqueduct musculoskeletal injuries. Here, about halfway through, you will see flat racing in Ohio. Harness racing is dramatically safer. In fact, it may be one of the safest racing, to my knowledge, as I sit here today, it's the safest racing activity on earth. I can't say that somewhere on the planet there isn't a safer one, but this is certainly in North America, one of the most safest things. The aqueduct report, which looked at the somewhat unusual, not exceptionally unusual, it was, it drew attention, but it was certainly within the range of musculoskeletal injuries in racing horses, came to the conclusion that medication was the problem. Forgive me, I read the report. There was no, as I understand it, and you correct me if I'm wrong, was, there was little or no, there were few necropsy reports on the actual horses. Is that correct? There were also, the analytical chemistry on the horses was incomplete. So you had a situation where you had deaths, you were unable to completely define the cause of death because you didn't have a full pathology report, and the role of, the role of medication was unclear. But nevertheless, the conclusion was made that one of the approaches to the problem was going to be changing the medication rule. And whether that's correct or not, and I am personally unaware of any evidence from either the aqueduct report or in the larger scheme of things suggesting that medication is going to be a problem, the position was taken that we're going to change the medication rules to address the problem of musculoskeletal injuries, which does not exist in harness racing, as you have heard before, and as I independently developed from the literature and presented here. So I am unaware of the science behind the recommendation with respect to harness racing. I believe that medication was the source of the problem. If you look at harness racing and thoroughbred racing in Ohio, you have this huge differential in the death rate. The harness racing is very safe. Ohio thoroughbred racing is about as dangerous, it's more dangerous than in Kentucky. It's about as dangerous to the horse as anywhere else. If medication was the source, they're running under exactly the same medication rules. If medication was the source of the problem, you've got a huge differential. Medication is clearly not the source of the problem. It is another, the source of the problem in thoroughbred racing is, the musculoskeletal injury, is elsewhere and is not clearly associated with medication in any way. From a harness racing perspective, as I say in my summary, it is appropriate to let thoroughbred racing explore the medication rule change approach to their problem, and for harness racing, it would be appropriate to wait and see whether it works. That would be the equivalent of a controlled experiment. You have a very safe modality of racing, and you have a modality with an injury problem, you want to change it. If you change, just hold harness racing where it is and see whether it changes in thoroughbred racing. There's no evidence that the current equine medication rule is not optimal for harness racing, and you have heard presentations from the two people ahead of me saying that they are very comfortable with the current, the current rule, and they do not see any need to change based on what happened in thoroughbred racing. Specifically with respect to clenbuterol, there was With, specifically with respect to clenbuterol, there was testimony that because harness horses start so often, that with, at the current threshold, which is 20 picograms per ml in plasma, there is little to no opportunity to use the medication for a partitioning effect. It's being used, and it was as it was intended, and FDA approved for its respiratory function. It is easy to administer, it's orally administered, it's effective, it's got a long history of being effective. As, as Mr. Farado said, "If an age broke, don't fix it." That's the summary of my opinion and my analysis. Now let me briefly walk through what I have here. When I reviewed the musculoskeletal injury rates in thoroughbred and harness horsing, harness racing, I went to the literature and I pulled up a paper by Professor Parkin, who actually was a consultant on the, on the aqueduct report. And I looked basically, it's one of the references here, I looked basically for evidence in that, A, that medication was a problem, and B, what was a little surprising, the title of this paper is Race Track Industry, Race Track Injuries. Harness racing does not appear anywhere in this report at all. It looks at thoroughbred racing and at steeplechase racing and hurdle racing, but it doesn't refer to harness racing. And I took that as evidence consistent with my opinion on my review of the data, as you've heard here many times, that harness racing is extremely safe. The question has arisen as to whether or not the harness horse is physiologically different than the thoroughbred horse. And I will draw your attention to a short communication in the Equine Veterinary Journal in 1995, and I will give you the background on this, because one of my conclusions in this paper, written long before any of these matters arose, was that harness horses and thoroughbred horses are physiologically different. We have known for, as long as I've been in this industry, that a thoroughbred horse has the potential to produce an extremely acidic post-race urine. It's dramatically different. And this is important in drug testing because drugs will trap in an acidic urine, a basic drug, lidocaine, epivacaine, will trap in an acidic urine, and you get an unusually high concentration. So we were interested in trying to reproduce in the laboratory this pH change. My colleagues at the Ohio State University had harness horses on a treadmill, they were running them, and they were trying to produce these acidic urines that are characteristic of the thoroughbred. And they were unable to do so. And we were discussing it because I was working on another aspect of the problem, and I said to them, "Maybe the harness horse is physiologically different. Have you gone back to your post-race samples that are going through your lab and looked at the distribution of pH samples in the harness horse?" And when they did that, they turned out to be different. And they were gentlemen in Ohio. I had made the suggestion, and we published the paper together, and the paper is entitled "Frequency Distribution of Post-Race Urine pH from Standard Breeds Compared with Thoroughbreds: Research and Regulatory Significance." And I'm looking here for the particular words that I have. Give me a second, I'll find them. I use the word physiologically different in the paper to describe the differences. Okay, if you look at page 472, the third paragraph down on the right, "In our data, there is no suggestion of the sharply bimodal distributions, so characteristic of post-race samples from thoroughbred racehorses, and it appears that post-race urine samples from thoroughbreds are physiologically different when compared with samples from standard breeds." That was a paper written approaching 20 years ago. I just said there's a physiological difference. The one thing I point out in my report is that there is a huge physiological difference between a thoroughbred horse and a harness horse. A thoroughbred horse is carrying 126 pounds, more or less, of non-contributing mass, the jockey. And if you do the math on the two horses as they run, the physiological differences, simply because of the mass difference, are remarkable. And that would be a, that is a matter, that is an opinion based on the mass differences, and it probably relates to the injury differences, too. Another point I want to draw your attention to, and this was drawn to my attention by Dr. Malin, there is a question about the quantification methodology for methylprednisolone in post-race plasma samples. It's attachment number seven. And what we have done basically is we have shown that one of the metabolites of methylprednisolone has exactly the same mass as methylprednisolone itself. The mass metrometer sees a drug as a mass. We have a quirk in methylprednisolone metabolism such that it, one of the metabolites has the same mass, so you have to show rigorously that you have separated the two masses before you do the quantification. And one of the things I have been doing in my research area is making reference standards for use in racing, and that is one of the questions that has arisen concerning, concerning the technology of methylprednisolone quantitation. I have made the point with respect to clenbuterol, that under the circumstances in harness racing, because of the short periods of use and the frequent starts, the probability of using this as a performance, as a repartitioning agent is very much less. I also want to draw your attention to a, let me just pull this up, to some unusual and unexpected data. It's paper number 274. It would be attachment number eight. And if we turn to about page, the last page of that paper, we were looking at, I was basically looking at clenbuterol in urine as a regulatory threshold, and this was published in 2001, about the year 2000. And if you look on the right hand, the right-hand corner here, you will see the clenbuterol concentration's dropping, and then at about 10 days post-administration, it had a blip up, and then it went down again. And based on that, as I sit here today, I don't understand what happened, but I do firmly believe that these are valid and correct data. For some reason, something happened in all that group of horses that the urinary concentration of clenbuterol kicked up. And thinking back, or going back to my previous statement about the very, very large differences in urinary pH and other physiological characteristics, I abandoned any thought of regulating clenbuterol in urine based on that paper. And I recommended plasma regulation to the Kentucky Horse Racing Commission. That was the year 2000, when there wasn't a lot of plasma regulation going on. And I understand there's at least one horse in a Boringer study that seems to show a somewhat similar blip response in the urine. Urinary concentrations of drugs are just inherently less reliable and less reproducible than plasma concentrations. Let me just see what else in there. The very last attachment that I have here, I trust, trust I have it, is a document, and Dr. Benson may want to speak to this, that turned up at the Ohio State, Ohio State Racing Commission. The Horsemen, HPPA, asked for literature citations or references that would support the regulatory thresholds proposed. And I am pleased to see, if you, if you look at this document, the very last document, I am very pleased to see that, where are we? On the top of page, the second page, Furosemide Cheeral, that is the reference that I presented to you that we did 30 years ago, which with some significant variations is the basis of the current medication rule for furosemide. Delighted to see that. Troubled, if you will forgive me, Dr. Benson, by the citation number one. And I'm going to cite, I don't have the actual reference in front of me, but I have reviewed it. The citation supposedly supporting the ace promazine threshold and withdrawal time guideline. To the best of our recollection, if you read Weider, you will see that it was performed with an oral formulation, not with an IV formulation, and I believe the RMTC recommendation is an IV recommendation. The number of horses is small, it's six. The dose is an oral dose, it's very large indeed. I, I fail to see, and I invite Dr. Benson to educate me, how this reference supports in any way the RMTC proposed recommendation for ace promazine. Gentlemen, I thank you very much. If you have any questions, I will be very happy to do my best to answer. Thank you very much.
Next up is Dr. Kenneth McKeever, Professor, Rutgers University, Department of Animal Sciences. All right. Thank you. Okay, Dr. McKeever, would you please raise your right hand and respond to the following? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to present is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Would you please state your name, address, and affiliation for the record and then proceed with your testimony?
My name's Kenneth McKeever, and my address is the Department of Animal Sciences, the Equine Science Center at Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey, in New Brunswick, New Jersey. I've been asked to speak about clenbuterol, some of the research that we've done at Rutgers, and how it fits into the context of the hearing today. I provided an outline of what I was going to cover in the beginning. When I talk to my students, I'll ask them, "Do you want the long lecture or the short lecture?" Today, we're going to get the short lecture. But I, but I thought I'd cover a couple definitions, because there are a lot of things thrown out in the literature and some of the letters that have been written from various agencies. Body composition. Body composition is, boiled down, is how much fat and how much muscle you have in that horse's body. You can measure fat mass, and if you have body weight, you can calculate fat-free mass, which essentially translates to muscle. We conducted a study at Rutgers, and I'll provide all these papers that I have here today, where one of the first questions we had was, is there a relationship between fat-free mass or muscle mass and performance in elite standard-bred horses? We actually conducted a study down at Lina Toscana's barn a number of years ago, back in about 2000. And we showed that there was indeed a, a link between the amount of muscle mass a horse had and its ability to run in a standard-bred race. The question then came up, and this all was part of Charlie Kearns's PhD dissertation. He had seen that clenbuterol was going to be released for use in horses, commented that that was the drug of choice of the female bodybuilders that you saw on ESPN. They wanted the repartitioning effect, to burn off fat and put on muscle. But the question was, are there effects on that muscle that can affect performance? So he conducted a rather huge study looking at horses from the whole body, right down to the single fiber contraction studies that he did. And we published a number of papers that, that produced results that I'll present a little bit today. The repartitioning is something that's been talked about, and if you look at the literature, a number of studies have only focused on what happens with fat mass, burning off fat. They haven't really looked at what goes on with muscle. Charlie's studies actually looked at the ability of clenbuterol to stimulate the buildup of muscle. Some of the other terms that I'll use, when we did our performance studies, we looked at aerobic capacity. We also looked at the other side of the cost of running a race, and that's the anaerobic power that that horse has. So you pay for that race with how much oxygen you can use, and also anaerobic metabolism, which translates into generating lactic acid and lactate. The, so there are two sides to how that horse pays for the cost of the activity. And when we look at things on a muscle basis, there are different fiber types that go into making that horse run from point A to point B. Now those fiber types, I could go into a long lecture, but you have endurance fibers, you have sprint fibers, and in between you have a fiber that's sort of got characteristics of both. And that's a fiber that's highly trainable, highly malleable. It can sort of go in both directions. The, so we, in some of these studies, looked at the different fiber types and the effects of clenbuterol. A couple other terms that I want to throw out are ergogenic and ergolytic. A lot of times, we're worried whether a particular drug has a performance-enhancing characteristic, whether it's ergogenic. Ergolytic would be a substance that actually decreases performance, and more on that as I go on here. So if we look at the, the actual published peer-reviewed studies that are out there, the early studies focused on the ergogenic effects of clenbuterol. Did it affect increased performance? Did it enhance performance in racehorses? And most of those studies unequivocally said it doesn't enhance performance. Charlie was concerned that if a horse was put on clenbuterol, if it had an, a repartitioning effect and actually increased muscle mass, had an anabolic effect. Now, it's not a steroid, but it's having the ability to put on muscle. It has an anabolic effect. If it did that, was that a functionally significant increase in muscle mass? Did it really matter if they had, had more muscle? So we actually looked at the effects of clenbuterol on, on repartitioning, on performance, on cardiac function, and then right down to the muscle cells themselves. And to cut to the chase, what Charlie found was that, that clenbuterol indeed had a repartitioning effect. And his study is one that's cited out there in the RMTC documents that showed that it, and I'll give you all these papers, that it actually caused a reduction in fat, but also whether it was clenbuterol alone or clenbuterol coupled with exercise training, it increased muscle mass. And that's a key point, because some of the studies that are also cited in the RMTC document have only looked at the fat side of the equation. They've measured rump fat thickness, but they haven't calculated the effects as far as putting on the muscle mass. The Charlie study also showed that when you looked at markers of performance in the racehorse, in standard breeds, that, that we saw a decrease in aerobic capacity. That's not a good thing in a racehorse. We saw a decrease in the velocity to get them up to their maximal aerobic capacity. Again, not a good thing in a racehorse. And we saw slower heart rate recovery time, which speaks to the aerobic capacity of the horse, the ability to recover quickly post-exercise. Now, another surprising thing was, we had this increase in muscle mass after two weeks with, with the treatment with clenbuterol, yet we saw a decrease in runtime to fatigue. So they had more muscle, but they had less anaerobic power, less ability to handle hanging on to that high-intensity exercise. And when we started looking at the actual And when we started looking at the actual fiber type distribution, which muscle fibers were involved in the activity, we saw a shift in the fiber profile from a middle-distance runner's profile to one more indicative of a sprinter or a weightlifter, which is, again, not a good thing for a middle-distance runner. So the anabolic effect of clenbuterol, yes, increased muscle mass, but really didn't translate into an increase in performance. We also saw that, and there was a paper that Meg Sleeper from U Penn, she came over and did the echocardiographs for us, she showed that the eight weeks of clenbuterol treatment actually started pushing the horses into the beginning phases of heart failure. So taken all together, we recommended, from our studies, that clenbuterol be used short-term for its effective respiratory effects for treating respiratory disease, but that it be used with caution, with the note that if you use it long-term, and with a middle-dose range on the chart that the company had produced, that you could run into these potential ergolytic effects that we were seeing with our studies. If we look at the literature, there's studies cited in the RMTC document, and you go to their notation in that document, and they're actually just citing a personal communication as far as the resolution of the repartitioning effect that you see with clenbuterol and exercise training. Charlie's studies, one of the limitations for the purposes here today, only looked at what goes on as far as the upswing, the gaining of muscle mass. He didn't look at the period post-treatment. And that's where research really needs to be done. There was a study that was done at U Penn where they looked at a limited number of standard breeds, and they measured what goes on with fat mass post-administration of the clenbuterol. And I caution that that study only looked at what goes on with the fat mass, not what goes on with muscle mass. And they cite, you know, an ongoing study, I know there was a study that they were doing with clenbuterol that involved polo ponies, and again, I caution that that study is not representative of what's going on in standard-bred or thoroughbred racehorses. So there's a total lack of information on what happens once you stop giving the clenbuterol. Does the muscle mass go back to the original setting? Is there a reversal of the repartitioning effects? We don't know, and that's where we need actual scientific data to justify any of the withholding times that have been put out. I'd say there's no support for a 30-day, or a 21-day, as New Mexico has, the 14-day that the thoroughbred people have suggested, or the 96-hour time. I think before a decision can be made, scientific studies, and very well-controlled scientific studies, need to be done. And I'd be happy to answer questions, and the papers I brought today, I'll turn them on.
I guess one of the questions that I had in reading your papers was whether there should be more research conducted in cases in which there's greater exercise for the horses that are in that part of the study?
Yeah. If I were to design another study to follow up with this, I would put horses into a race training situation. Right now, and I can't talk about the research too much, but we're doing a drug trial. The company was interested in the application of that drug for treating a condition of racehorses. So we've spent 12 weeks training those horses to bring them up to a level that was considered race-fit, and then from there, applying the drug. I think a controlled study, and there are advantages to doing something like that in the lab rather than in the field, a controlled study needs to be done that can, you know, answer the question at hand.
Ken, given the apparent toxic side effects of clenbuterol, do you have any recommendations, with that in mind, about what you think would be the appropriate means of regulating it in thoroughbred or standard-bred racehorses?
Well, I think as far as the regulation, I think the research needs to be done as far as the withholding times. I think the drug is effective as a treatment for upper airway and lower airway disease. I think the company's shown that with the number of studies that are around there. But I caution that it shouldn't be given long-term, that our studies have shown that there are substantial side effects that wouldn't be good in a racehorse. You want to treat them for the lung disease and then get them off the drug as fast as possible.
Any other questions? Dr. Palmer?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for your testimony.
You can have them. I've got them on the desk.
I think this is an appropriate time as well to remind people that as we're getting more information, more documents that are submitted, staff may have additional questions or follow-up questions related to that materials, and we'd appreciate it if you make yourselves available should those questions arise. Next up, we have Peter Cantor. Dr. Cantor? Dr. Cantor, if you'd be so kind, would you raise your right hand and respond to the following? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to present is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Please state your name, address, and affiliation for the record, and then you may proceed with your testimony.
Okay, my name is Peter, I'm Cantor, DVM, Ph.D. I reside at 925 Quaker Road in East Aurora, New York, 14052. My affiliation probably best characterizes my clinic, South Towns Equine, okay? I have been in continuous veterinary practice for 41 years, having graduated from Cornell University in 1973. I also have a Ph.D. in pharmacology, which I gained in 1978 from the New York, from the State University of New York in Buffalo. I was employed by the State of New York Roswell Park Cancer Institute for a period of 34 years, where I was a member of the pharmacology department, the Department of Surgery, the Department of Medicine, and finally, the Department of Diagnostic Imaging. I was also director of the drug development, director of drug development for the institute. I have authored many scientific papers, primarily in the human literature, but I've also published some in the veterinary literature. And I've conducted well over 100 preclinical drug studies under tightly, under tight sanctions by, to the FDA, in furtherance of drug development in humans. In addition, I have continuously, for the past 35 years, I've been a track veterinarian for Buffalo Raceway and Batavia Downs, present for all live racing. I'm currently in full-time racetrack practice. In addition, I have a clinic and surgical practice devoted mostly to horses. My concerns basically center on that list of 24 drugs that we will apparently be restricted to in our day-to-day practice, and I have particular concerns, as the others have, of the use of methylprednisolone acetate and clenbuterol. In terms of drug armamentarian, I have developed a list by just going through my truck of the drugs I routinely use in my practice, in comparison to the 24 that were mentioned in the paperwork. In terms of diuretics, I use furosemide and aquazone, furosemide listed, aquazone not. Antogetics, there are many, phenobutazone, ketoprofen, methocarbamol, et cetera, almost all of them are covered, except for a couple very useful ones, naproxen, nalbutrin, and prevacox. Anesthetics are not mentioned, I use ketamine routinely. Non-anabolic steroids, prednisolone, dexamethasone are mentioned. Methylprednisolone acetate, triumphinolone, betamethasone, but not prednisone, not pre-death, not flu cortin. These are all very useful agents. Anti-ulceromeprazol is mentioned. In terms of local anesthetics, mepivacaine is mentioned, lidocaine, but useful ones such as benzacane and serapine are not. In terms of hormones, we use a lot of them in the horses for good reason, ACTH, chorionic, progesterone, regumate, estroide, none of these are mentioned. In terms of tranquilizers, xylazine and acromazine are mentioned, along with dormosidane, but two useful ones, resurfing or not, and I have to use a lot of days of amvalium, that's not mentioned. Immune stimulants are not mentioned, I used to use a lot of levamisole, that's not mentioned. In terms of hemostatics, and by that I mean drugs useful for preventing exercise-induced pulmonary hemorrhage, glycapyrilate is mentioned, but not carbazprom complex, amicar, atropine, enbutal alcohol, and the type V inhibitors such as Viagra, Cialis. And I don't mean these in terms of pre-race drugs, I mean in terms of horses have to train prior to racing, it's a good thing to prevent bleeding during that training period. And in my experience, Lasix is probably one of the worst agents there is for preventing bleeding. So these others are far more effective, and that's who I go with, and I have no idea. In terms of antibiotics, procainpentacillin is mentioned, but none of the others, cephalosporin, xenroflox, and tetracycline, a very long list of useful agents. In terms of pulmonary, clenbuterol, yes, but not acetylcysteine or guaifenesin. Guaifenesin, a very useful drug. In terms of cardiac drugs, I use quinidine, isopretinol, and digitalis. Miscellaneous, dantrolene is indicated, but not adequate or something like pentasand. And I think the problem we face is that the drug testing policy and threshold states the position put forth, quote, "Substances not contained on the schedule would be considered prohibited," meaning they should not be present in post-race sample at any level. And there's no way that we have any feeling for what, how far out we have to be, but we're not going to be called for a trace level of any of these drugs. It's a huge problem for us, so we're restricted to a very few amount of drugs, we have to use the others. And, you know, what are we to do? It's going to cause incredible confusion, and we're going to be denying horses the benefits of medicine and research for the last, you know, God knows how many years. So I'm just very uncomfortable with this. The wording indicates that trace levels are to be considered positive. This is inherently unsound, both medically and scientifically. No reasonable person would dispute that pharmacologic levels, levels that produce a therapeutic effect when found during race night, should constitute a problem. I don't think anybody would argue against that. However, trace drug levels, which may even potentially come from environmental contaminations, horses nibble dirt, straw, whatever, containing extruded drugs, given at an appropriate time, would have, may come up positive. And there is no potential for performance enhancement with these trace levels. So pharmacologic levels, yes, but trace levels, I don't get it. And we're going to be called for trace levels. I think limiting administration to racehorses, the 24 named agents on a routine basis severely restricts the armamentarian or veterinarians such as myself who are in the trenches. In addition, many medications routinely go off the market, and replacements must be made with less commonly known agents, which are not mentioned there. We're always facing drug shortages. Okay. Now, I saw in the handouts that I was given by Mr. Fraulow that there were, mentioned that there are differences, that there are potential differences between standard breeds and thoroughbreds in the way they handle drugs. I've noticed this in my practice in terms of efficacy, where for tranquilizers, for instance, you have to give less to standard breeds, more to thoroughbreds, less to workhorses, more to Arabs, that sort of thing. So there are some differences on a practical day-to-day basis on how much you must give. And I think, you know, probably it's a minor, a minor point, because maybe dose doubling or dose halving is all we have to go through, which is maybe one drug half-life, you know, in terms of practical matters. So I think this is a relatively minor point of argument, and I think the stronger argument for the two different standards is the totally different nature of the two race industries, which has been, you know, gone on, I don't know, I've seen by the prior people, you know, properly. And standard breeds race with nearly weekly frequency. To put a number on this, just for whatever reason, I looked at the race cards of Aqueduct and Buffalo Raceway this past Saturday night. There were 63 evaluable horses in Aqueduct, I threw out the maidens, because that would just skew the data. And the average horse age was 5.1 years for the thoroughbreds, seven years for the standard breeds. The average start per year was 8.5 for the thoroughbreds, which is an every 40-day average, if you wish to put it that way. For the standard breeds, it was 32, with every 11.4 days. And we try to race weekly, but obviously, the meats are only of a certain size, so there are times off. And there's a huge number of, in the thoroughbreds, there was only one horse in that entire card of 63 that had raced more than 20 times. He raced 21 times one year, 26 the other. Standard breeds, we had 30 horses with more than 35 starts a year, we're 41 percent. Greater than 40 starts per year, 12 percent of those horses. So these are heavily raced animals, is the take-home message. And so they race more frequently and have a much shorter interval between races, they're an older population of racehorses, and they need more medical care for that reason. They're expected to race weekly, and their training regimens are geared for this. Their anatomy and physiology is such that they can do this year in and year out. And the only way for the game to be financially viable for an owner is to have weekly racing, period. The owners of a lifeblood of the industry, without them, there's going to be a death spiral. How do you keep the horses racing for a hoped-for weekly degree of frequency? The primary medical issue in standard breeds are sore joints, be they knees, ankles, stifles, hocks, coffin joints, rarely the other joints. Given the need to keep the horse physically fit for racing, long layups are not practical. The industry strongly depends on intra-articular joint injections. Systemic treatments, we have them, you know, drugs such as adequate, hyaluronic acid, pentasand, but in my experience, they will not bring a lame horse to soundness, period. If the horse is laid up sufficiently long for the joint to calm down and become non-painful, the training process to bring them back to a competitive level will bring a return to joint pain. So nothing has been gained, time has been lost, and money has been lost. Requiring a week off after corticosteroid injections will greatly decrease racing frequently and adversely affect profitability. I think if an owner is given the choice between effective joint therapy, making that lame horse sounder, versus missing a race, he's going to race, and that's going to bring harm to the horse and to the industry. And I, and most other vets, consider corticosteroids absolutely essential for effective joint therapy. You can inject standard breeds on a monthly or bimonthly basis for years on end with no apparent ill effects. In addition, my experience, which is limited with thoroughbreds, I do some thoroughbred work, is they just need fewer joint injections and fewer joints. Now, the problem with standard breeds is they usually have multiple problems. It's nothing to see a horse who has a coffin joint problem, ankle problem, knee, and you probably might have to do a stifles. This may require up to 800 to 1,000 milligram of methylprednisolone to be effective. I have done this on myriad occasions with no apparent harm to the patients. The Pennsylvania regulations that I saw are based upon a seven-day withdrawal after use of a 200-milligram. Simply put, 200-milligram, in my opinion, is frequently insufficient for effective treatment. Now, if we can't use these steroids, such as methylprednisolone, on a routine and regular basis to keep these animals sound, what are the alternatives? Things like shockwave therapy, direct nerve and intra-articular chemical or nerve blocks, or surgical nerve resection. These generally work no matter how bad the joint is. Intra-articular steroids are not particularly useful when you have a very bad joint. So I think to say that it's going to, that we can take a good, a very, very bad joint to soundness... to soundness where the horse should not be racing, corticosteroids just isn't going to happen. Okay. So I think that we're going to switch to those modalities. I won't personally, but I think it will be greatly to the detriment of the horse population. Thoroughbred trainers have the luxury of long intervals between races to medicate and treat their horses, steer clear of the mandated withdrawal times, but standardbred trainers simply do not have the luxury. And it is stated throughout that the proposed medication changes regarding intra-articular joint therapy will prevent catastrophic breakdowns. The types of catastrophic breakdowns such as long bone fractures suffered with some frequency in the thoroughbred industry is thankfully a very rare problem in standard breeds due to their inherent ruggedness, the fact that standard breeds always have two feet on the ground versus thoroughbreds which don't. Long bone catastrophes do occur in standard breeds. I'm not going to deny that, and I've been, you know, track vet for 34 years, there every night. I do see them. Rare, but I do see them. But they're usually due to accidents during pileups, driver error, equipment malfunction, not medication abuse. In theory and practice, failure to provide joint relief may lead to shifting weight to the opposite leg, increasing load, and a potential fracture to that leg. So I think in order to keep the game safe, we really have to keep the joints fairly non-painful so that they don't break stride. They'll break stride with lameness, and they're going to load the other leg with lameness. So I think that's where the problem is going to arise. If we put these types of rules into effect, I think we're going to worsen the situation. Personally, you know, I've been around a long time. I've probably given in excess of 50,000 joint injections, and I do not know of a single incidence where they contributed to catastrophic breakdown during a race. I have direct knowledge of this, as I've been the track veterinarian nightly for 34 years. To take this point further, I know of many instances where failure to alleviate joint pain has led to catastrophic breakdowns. Probably, and I can't speak eloquently to this because I haven't done research in the area in terms of clonbuterol. But I think our second biggest problem in the standardbred industry is upper and lower airway diseases. Horses have many, many lung problems, viral, bacterial. They all have some sort of incidence of exercise-induced pulmonary hemorrhage, and all of this has to be taken care of. Horses also, our standardbred horses also suffer from a lot of inhalation of stonedust. I scope five, 10, 20 horses a night during the races, and you'll see granules, stonedust all up and down the trachea. That has to be gotten rid of. And clonbuterol unfortunately is really the only effective medication out there to help clear the airways, and if you take it away from us, you take away the only medication that is legal to use. I don't think that therapy by inhalation of albuterol, for instance, is of any use whatsoever. I did three or four years of inhalation research. I actually got amicusin by inhalation legal in humans, and I don't think you can get far enough down the lungs because of particle size to be effective in racehorses. It comes down to particle size, and it's just not going to happen. It's just too long a pathway. It's going to get hung up high up. And that's really all I have to say. I agree that probably uniform rules are a good idea. It's just I don't think they should be uniform between thoroughbreds and standard breeds. And I think another problem, and I don't know if it's a minor one, is even if we have uniform rules, which would be great from state to state, is their uniform drug testing. I mean, I've run analytical labs in my career, and I know that there are major differences between analytical labs and what they come up with. Period. So, uniform rules, yes, but there has to be uniform testing, too. And, you know, we solved that, certainly when I was doing research for the drug companies, we would take samples and send them to various laboratories, and we would come up with different results. No question about it. There's a lot, it's just the nature of the beast. And that's really all I'd like to say.
Dr. Palmer, I have a couple of questions. Peter, are noticing your list of medications that you provided for us here. What was absent was any reference to hyaluronic acid or the use of PRP or IRAP or any of the biologic therapies? You also did not include that as an alternative to steroid injections when you listed shockwave therapy and et cetera.
Okay.
Could you expand on that just a little bit?
Yeah, I don't consider hyaluronic acid alone effective joint therapy. And I obviously, you know, I've been using hyaluronic acid since the 80s. And it's a useful agent, but unless you, my strong feeling, unless you add a steroid to it, it doesn't work, it doesn't last. It's useful, but not that useful. The far more potent part of the combination is the steroid. Now, in terms of IRAP, yes, it's, I think, a very good therapy. I've just participated in a study with Ohio State on that. We have a publication out on it. I think it's a very good therapy. It's cumbersome, you have to draw blood, you have to incubate, you have to do this, do that. On a day-to-day basis, it's hard to be practical with it, but I'm deeply in favor of it. Yes, and that is a possible alternative. But it means you have to have laboratory backup when you do this, and the, you know, I'm in the trenches. The day-to-day guy that runs around from barn to barn treating horses, it's, it may not be practical, and it's also very expensive. The test kits for IRAP are very high. And in terms of standard breeds, which aren't going for great purse structures, may not be, may not be useful. But I am a great fan of IRAP.
Okay, thanks. Can you give us, you mentioned that the, you consider the issue of upper airway and lower airway inflammation to be a significant problem in a harness horse, and you talked about a need to treat with clonbuterol. Can you give me some idea about how often you dispense clonbuterol in your practice?
Um, I have, I do, I very rarely dispense it. I'm dealing with a cheaper population of horses with a low purse structure. Clonbuterol is fairly expensive, and just being able to give it for a couple of days, I don't think is all that useful in my estimation. And I have a reasonable feel for it because I treat and I scope. I treat, I scope. I have many horses brought into me all night long. I have a video scope so everybody gets to see, and follow them from week to week. And I never had tremendous luck with clonbuterol, given the fact you only give it for a day or two. My gut feeling is if you could give it all week, and we ignored its use as we do antibiotics, you know, for, in terms of regulatory concerns, I think we may be better off. But the way we are forced to give it with that four-day withdrawal, no. No, I use it very rarely. I think that I do a little better job with alfentroferron.
Thank you.
Sir, I'd like to also note for the record that we've been joined by Ed Burns, the commission general counsel. Dr. Dursa, would you please raise your right hand and respond to the following. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to present is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
Would you please state your name, your address, and your affiliation for the record, and then you may proceed with your testimony.
My name's Janet Dursa. My address is 321 Hill Road, Middletown, New York, 10941. I am an equine practitioner, private practitioner, and I'm affiliated with the USTA. My husband is a standardbred trainer and driver. I graduated from Cornell in 1989 veterinary college. I've been working in practice for over 20 years. I've, I'm recently a member of the ZWAI committee, and I've scoped horses at the Meadowlands for probably around 10 years during the races. So I have some background, and we've had probably, our training stable is anywhere from 30 to 100 horses in it each year. So I'm familiar with the standard breeds, and I also have a general practice in pleasure horse breeding farm work as well. I, the main thing I wanted to say was that I just, again, it's been stated several times, so I won't waste your time, that in my experience, I mean, in our stable, we've never had a fatal breakdown in any of our horses that I can recall during a race. Not that we've got thousands and thousands of starts, but we've got a lot. And I would say that on a day-to-day basis in outside practice, I would be much more likely to have to euthanize a horse out in the field because it broke a leg rather than on the racetrack. So that you can have a perspective. I mean, we see the, all these numbers, but to give you a perspective on that, I think that's, it's really minimal, catastrophic breakdown rate. I know enough has probably been said about the clonbuterol, and, you know, again, I feel that it's a good drug to have. It's the only one we got to, for small airway disease, which is pretty common in, in racehorses. And if, it'd be just, you know, one, if you have these long withdrawal times, it's just one less drug, and your, our hands are so tied as it is being, working on racehorses that it just makes it all that much harder to just treat a horse after the race. If they've got a little bit of blood in there, a little bit of, you know, a little bit of discharge, you want to just kind of keep them, their lungs healthy. It's, it's difficult as it is to do, and then you eliminate one of the halfway decent drugs we have, just makes it all that much harder. And I just, when I was going through those other drugs of the 24, I just, I'm not a scientist, and I, but I was trying to just go through some of them that I used and to see if I could figure out the withdrawals and what dose to use, and there were a few that I just, it's just not clear, and I don't know if it should go into legislation being unclear to the simple practitioner like me. Methylcarbamol, the dosage that they state, it's not a dose that we would ever use, so it's, I just can't relate to that. It's really low. So I don't know, in the dosage that I normally use, what timeframe is that? That's just one example. I think the only other one I just quickly wrote down was ditomidine. They have a reference of sublingual. I don't know any, you know, most of the time racetrack you're giving it intravenously, so again, how does that translate? I would have to assume it's okay, same dose, the same time out, but do I know? No. And Dr. Cantor already talked about the drugs that aren't on the list that we do use. What are those withdrawals? You know, if I geld a horse, can I race him in three weeks? Is my ketamine and my, say, valium going to show up because of that? You know, so it just seems to me it needs a little more work done on those things. I don't really have that much else to say.
Dr. Palmer, do you use interferon in your practice at all?
Oh, gosh, I remembered using it, trying it many, many years ago in the yearlings after the sales when they have a lot of respiratory. I didn't really see any, I didn't see anything, any help at that point, so not sure if I was using it properly, but I did try it, especially in the young horses, they come back from the sales, a lot of respiratory disease. So I didn't pursue it after that.
When you use clonbuterol with a harness horse that's regularly racing, you know, when do you use it? How much do you give? And what effect does it, do you see it have?
I would use it, I don't, well, I use it in our young horses in training, because there's a lot of young horses get viral disease and stuff like that. But if you're talking about during a horse that's regularly racing, I, if a horse, say, performance is not as good as we'd like, you get him scoped after the race, you see that he's got maybe a little bit of exudate in his trachea, maybe a little bit of hemorrhage, rather than increasing a latest dose or putting him on the list, I would try to use it then. I'd start right after the race, day after or whatever it was, I was able to, and I'd use it depending on if we were going to give him a week off. I'd love to use it the whole week, depending on which state we're racing. Again, this is, uniform rules is great because I would have to say, okay, where is he going to race next? And then, you know, how many days do I have? And can I use it? And can I not? It's, it's really hard. So if I could give him a week off, I would use it for maybe a week. If I can't, or if he didn't race that badly and I just want, trying to help his lungs out, I would give it maybe just a few days. I'm very paranoid about positive tests because it has a major effect on our marriage, so I, so I don't use it as much as I would like to, actually. If I know I have a week off, then I will use it for a week, and then I'll take him off. But they don't really need, a lot of these courses don't need. Do I see an effect? Very, very difficult. You can, even these studies are having a hard time showing an effect, so. And I would use, I don't like to over-treat, and I don't like to see side effects, so I use five to 10 cc's a day, which is the low dose. The low dose, really low. I'm just trying to help the horse out, just giving him, you know, whatever I can do.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Dr. Lucian De Chica.
De Chico.
De Chico. Dr. De Chica, would you please raise your right hand and respond to the following. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to present is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes.
If you would, please state your name, address, and affiliation for the record, and then you may proceed with your testimony.
My name is Vincent De Chico. I live at 141 Briar Bray Road, Stamford, Connecticut, 06903. I am a practicing veterinarian at both the thoroughbred and standardbred racetracks. I have been practicing veterinary medicine for over 30 years on both standardbred and thoroughbred racehorses. Thank you for permitting me to comment today on the proposed medication rule changes. Clonbuterol is an industry-standard first-line medication for the alleviation of respiratory symptoms in horses. I believe it would be detrimental to prohibit its use within 14 days of a race as is being proposed. Often upon transtracheal endoscopic examination, the vet can diagnose bronchospasm and mucus accumulation. He can then instruct the trainer on a dosing regimen of clonbuterol for alleviation of such. In addition, he will inform the trainer of the safe withdrawal time before a race. The vet can assure the trainer of the time withdrawal because he has practiced the same protocol without incident for many years. Clonbuterol administration has proven that horses suffering allergies due to pollen, dust, and even hemorrhage after training and racing will return to health without exacerbation of symptoms. Racehorses with known predisposition to mild respiratory infections verified by examination are routinely treated with clonbuterol after each race or training session, time permitting, in order to minimize the potential for infection. In addition, antibiotics are frequently necessary as an adjunct to clonbuterol to alleviate this annoying common problem. The combined effect of clonbuterol and antibiotics seems to be synergistic from a clinical standpoint, meaning that their combined effect is greater than the effectiveness of either alone. I believe it would be hard to find a trainer who has not experienced the benefits of this medication. It has been suggested by racetrack rumors that some people expect an anabolic effect from clonbuterol. I know of no trend among trainers to consider this product effective for its negligible anabolic effect. In truth, just feeding the horse a little more and training it a little harder would accomplish the same building-up result. Personally, I have never found abuse of this product when dispensed by a licensed veterinarian who, after a thorough examination, warrants the administration of this product. The whole purpose of clonbuterol is to alleviate respiratory symptoms. The whole purpose of clenbuterol is to alleviate respiratory symptoms. For its intended manufacturer's use, people are willing to pay the high cost of the product. People looking to save a buck have tried many times to substitute albuterol for clenbuterol. It has been my clinical experience that the desired effectiveness was never achieved with the use of albuterol. Even considering the many possible modalities suggested for administering albuterol, for example via aerosol, nebulizer, transpiration, et cetera, each has proven to be an impractical burden on a horse, not to mention stable health. Therefore, I believe that it would be an injustice to both the horse, patient, and the owner to be denied the use of clenbuterol within fourteen days of competition. Corticosteroids, probably the single most important medication in any veterinarian's treatment armamentarian would be corticosteroids. The textbooks consistently verify this concept. One of my esteemed mentors always preached, "No animal should ever die from the lack of a squirt of cortisone." In the early nineteen eighties, the New York State Racing and Wagering Board considered eliminating the use of corticosteroids on the racetrack. Their proposal to abolish the use of cortisone was met with such adamant objection that the board immediately decided that the medication was just too important to be taken away. It has been some thirty years or more since that meeting and now attempts to restrict the use of corticosteroids has again become an issue. One would be hard-pressed to find a veterinarian who didn't have more than one bottle of dexamethasone, the most common corticosteroid, in his little black bag. The tremendous importance of this pharmaceutical is undeniable. Many injections of medications, especially intravenously, have the potential to cause an anaphylactic response. For instance, tetracycline routinely administered intravenously could cause a horse to have such an adverse reaction. Tetracycline is now permitted up to twenty-four hours before a race and in addition of one or two cc's of dexamethasone will always greatly reduce the risk of such a potentially disastrous response. The same anaphylactic reactions are possible with other medications, for example vitamin B1 thiamine and certain other electrolyte solutions. Fortunately, the now forty-eight hour restriction of dex safely allows a vet to treat the horse. With a five-day proposed withdrawal on dexamethasone, standardbreds in particular would not be able to race every seven days. Clearly, the animal should not be put at risk by prohibiting such a minuscule amount of dexamethasone. We do need to establish precise threshold levels that coincide with a well-defined withdrawal time. Five to seven days is just not practical nor wise for the withdrawal of dexamethasone. The Mid-Atlantic Uniform Medication Reform's proposal to strictly limit equine veterinarians to the only twenty-four listed therapeutics has, in my opinion, been poorly developed. For instance, tetracycline is not even on the twenty-four acceptable therapeutic medications list. This is a very important, routinely-used antibiotic. Proposing such overt restrictions raises the legitimate question, do we just not treat sick animals to ensure healthy ones? Listing specific names of medications rather than classifications of these medications severely ties the hands of the practicing veterinarian. What happens when one or more of the, of those twenty-four medications are no longer available? The animal deserves the luxury of being treated properly and so do the owners who have an investment in them. Thank you for your careful consideration and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Benson, would you please raise your right hand and respond to the following? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to present is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
Thank you. Would you please state your name, address, and affiliation for the record, and then you may proceed with your testimony?
My name is Dr. Dion Benson. My address is 821 Corporate Drive, Lexington, Kentucky. I'm the Executive Director of the Racing Medication Testing Consortium. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be here today and speak about the National Medication, Uniform Medication Program, much of which your proposed regulations is based upon. I think that one of the best ways for me to start is talk about, a little bit about how our thresholds are created. They certainly are based in science and the majority of them do have published, peer-reviewed articles to support them. There are several ways that the thresholds have been developed throughout the years. The RMTC has been in place since nineteen, or, excuse me, the early two thousands and essentially, some of the thresholds that are recommended predate the existence of the RMTC. As Dr. Tobin indicated, the ferrosemide research that he did certainly predates the RMTC, it was done in nineteen eighty-three. Then there, we've also done reviews of literature for drugs that are well-studied and there's been much research done prior to the existence or even while RMTC was in existence, we were, we looked to peer-reviewed published research. The third category of thresholds came from RMTC-sponsored studies. These are administration studies on twenty or more, generally twenty or more horses, some standardbred, some thoroughbred. And we have also gotten data from other groups such as the European Horse Racing Scientific Liaison Commission, as well as our counterparts in Australia who've done, recently performed approximately twenty administration studies. They provide us the data under a confidentiality agreement. Our scientific advisory committee, who have all signed confidentiality agreements, review them. These are, this data is then, undergoes a very robust statistical analysis, it's called a ninety-five, ninety-five tolerance interval calculation. It is the same that is done for milk withdrawal, so in other words, if you give a dairy cow a medication, it's the time at which, it would be the same time at which a, the same calculation that determines the time at which that milk is safe for human consumption again. So in other words, very conservative, it's generally three to four or more standard deviations away from the mean. It is very conservative, when we've consulted with colleagues around the world, some of the world-renowned pharmacologists in Europe think that we actually have far more of a conservative way of estimating these thresholds and withdrawal guidelines than they would. And it also takes variability of the data into account. So in other words, for, when we're looking at urine data, because there's more variability, the threshold is higher than it would be for similar plasma data. And when we're looking at fewer numbers of horses, that is also taken into, into account with what's called a K-factor. The K-factor for fewer horses is larger, so therefore the threshold is larger, whereas if you have twenty horses, the K-factor is smaller. In other words, it's, it's a very conservative, very robust statistical analysis that we perform. Once all the data is gathered, that information, the raw data, as well as ninety-five, ninety-five tolerance interval calculation, as well as any method or analytical method or, and all the accompanying data that goes along with that, is then reviewed by the Scientific Advisory Committee of the RMTC. The RMTC Scientific Advisory Committee consists of regulatory veterinarians, private veterinarians, veterinary pharmacologists, veterinary toxicologists, veterinary surgeons, and analytical laboratory directors. In fact, Dr. Malin and Dr. Palmer both sit on our scientific advisory committee currently. As I've said, the members of the SAC have entered into confidentiality agreements, which allows them to see data pre-publication, or in the case of the European data, data that just does not get published, they do not provide that information. And that allows us to forego spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on research that's already been done. But those individuals come from all walks of life, they come from all parts of the, the racing industry. Once the Scientific Advisory Committee approves a threshold, it then goes to the RMTC board. The RMTC board, at the time these thresholds were enacted, included the USTA. It currently still includes the Hamiltonian Society. Many of the members are regulators in jurisdictions that regulate multiple breeds, including quarterhorse, standardbred, harness horse, and Arabians. And addition, in addition to these thresholds going through the RMTC process, they all go, also go through the RCI process, which includes their drug standard, standards and testing committee, as well as their model rules committee and board. Incidentally, many of these thresholds also went through a separate process that included a panel of experts, including Dr. Malin, Dr. Soma, Dr. Tobin, Dr. Sams, and Dr. Stanley during Mid-Atlantic medication meetings in two thousand twelve. So these have been extremely thoroughly vetted. Finally, they've also been vetted through the American Association of Equine Practitioners, they're, they have a special committee that was designated to look at these, they were approved by their racing committee, as well as the AAEP board. So there have been many eyes on all of these thresholds and ultimately they've been approved by all groups. The determinations are such so that findings and concentrations in excess of the set thresholds have the potential to affect race performance. RMTC is currently threshold, has thresholds for twenty-four medications, and I guess perhaps we've not done a good explanation or a job of explaining these, because these thresholds, with the exception of procaine penicillin, do not concern antibiotics, we recommend that labs don't measure for them. So any of the antibiotics that were raised here today, issues regarding antibiotics were raised here today, simply don't exist. With the exception of levamisole, because of its, its metabolites, we don't include dewormers, we don't include antifungals. And I don't want to focus too much time on all of the medications, but I will also let you know that new meds, medications are consistently and currently being reviewed and added. We're in the process of doing an administration study for renididine, sumididine, cetirizine, which is an antihistamine, guaphenacin, which one of the veterinarians indicated was a great expectorant, as well as IV datomidine. We have one planned for eltrinajust, which is regiment or a female, something to keep them from cycling essentially in heat. And we also have other, considered other anabolic, other anabolic steroids that are going to be looked at in other medications. So this is a constantly evolving list. If drugs go off the market, there will be the opportunity, and the AEP and RCI both have the option to bring us medications for us to study. So in lieu of discussing each of the medications individually, I'd like to discuss a few of the more controversial ones that have been discussed here today. The first is flu nixon. This is a historical threshold that predates the RMTC. And when an administration was completed, that I believe was alluded to earlier by Dr. Arthur and Dr. Sams, in racehorses in California, and the data was reviewed at twenty-four hours, the concentration of flu nixon in these horses was below the level of measurement uncertainty, when, when the measurement, level of measurement uncertainty was considered. So in other words, none of those would have resulted in a positive finding. That being said, we are, we have a concern about flu nixon because it has a very short half-life. In other words, the time that it takes to decrease the amount of the drug by half is very short when compared to a drug like phenobutazone. If you look at flu nixon, it's one and a half to two hours, whereas phenobutazone is six hours. So in other words, changes to either the dose or the time of administration will have a greater effect on flu nixon than it will on phenobutazone. Which is why it's very important at minimum to go by the weight dosing and so forth. You can't just give a five-hundred-milligram, ten cc dose to every horse, to your eight-hundred-and-fifty-pound filly and your eleven-hundred-pound gelding and assume that they will all be okay at twenty-four hours. More importantly, because of flu nixon's short half-life, if we look at the importance of pre-race examinations, the effect of flu nixon, or there will be a greater effect of flu nixon in a shorter period of time. In other words, if you consider that there are perhaps six hours between your first inspection and your first race, allowing for three half-lives, you will have, instead of, and your horse is at twenty picograms per mil, or nanograms per mil at the time it's tested, it will have been at about a hundred and sixty picograms per mil, which there is a concern that that will hide potential lameness issues. And also, just to show, one of the things we are concerned about, we've actually performed a administration study last week in California for flu nixon, to determine whether the administration guidelines or guidance needs to be revisited. So we are looking at that as that concern was raised. The corticosteroids, so, the corticosteroids even had more scrutiny than our average thresholds do. They were discussed in November by a group of veterinarians, including practicing racetrack veterinarians, surgeons, regulatory vets, veterinary pharmacologists, and toxicologists, as well as the analytical chemists that were involved in this discussion. We actually had several practicing veterinarians and their concern was that, they wanted to remove the time of corticosteroid administration from the entry box to allow them to, the opportunity to determine the benefit of treatment prior to entry. In other words, they wanted to see if they performed an intra-articular injection and the horse subsequently either worked as a thoroughbred would or trained as a standardbred would, was there an effect? Did it help the horse? Is it ready to race? And for systemic corticosteroids, the goal was to have treatment occur prior to entry with consideration for relative potency. So in other words, some corticosteroids are more potent than others and therefore they may have an effect for a longer period of time. Turning first to the short-acting corticosteroids, dexamethasone, it's a fluorinated corticosteroid and therefore it's more potent than prednisolone. So that, we, based upon the existing research, we have a seventy-two-hour guideline that was developed and that translates to a five-picogram-per-mil threshold. And this was based on a ninety-five, ninety-five tolerance interval, so again, it's that very safe, very conservative approach. Prednisolone is a short-to-medium-acting glucocorticoid and based upon existing research, forty-eight-hour guidance was determined appropriate at one nanogram per mil based on the ninety-five, ninety-five tolerance interval determination. And the reason that we have the difference is, again, these have different potencies, so therefore we've recommended different withdrawal times for these two medications. Turning to the long-acting corticosteroids, withdrawal guidelines are exceedingly safe for intra-articular use at the dose provided. For methylprednisolone, we actually, based on Dr. Malin's comments, went back to determine as Dr. Tobin questioned whether we were dealing with the methylprednisolone plus the metabolite or just the methylprednisolone. And we were assured, and they did follow-up testing to ensure that it was just the methylprednisolone, not the metabolite, so it is the correct threshold. And that pub, study has actually been published, it's in e-publication ahead of publication, so it's available online. We've seen studies completed in Minnesota with these thresholds and at significantly higher doses in each of these, horses have been able to clear within seven days or fewer. California, currently a study is undergoing, underway in California that's showing very similar results. Thresholds have been in place in Minnesota, in Pennsylvania for some time. In Minnesota, the first year was tough, they saw many overages. Last year, they had a total of two, one at the standardbred and one at the thoroughbred track. And these are horses that race every week. Their, their thoroughbreds are not the nice, lovely thoroughbreds you get at Saratoga, they are the clamors that are running for seventy-five-hundred dollars that race on a regular basis. We've recommended a grace period to allow practitioners to adjust because we cannot account for every possible combination of medications and so forth that they will be looking at. We are in the process of analyzing data for an isopropadone threshold, so that should be forthcoming shortly. Then turning to clenbuterol, according to the manufacturer, clenbuterol is a bronchodilator and it thins mucus secretions. It's not a true expectorant, so it's not guaphenacin, it's not glycopyrolate, but it is, it thins the mucus secretions. There are significant concerns regarding the repartishing effect. As it's been discussed ad nauseam, there, there's less fat, more muscle. There are concerns regarding the potential effects of long-term, high-dose uses. As Dr. McKeever's study indicate, he, he looked at the high dose for long-term, five-day-on, two-day-off use. And there are concerns in a number of jurisdictions across a variety of race and breeds that there exists a wide exists a widespread overuse of this medication. It's not limited to one breed or one jurisdiction. California, they saw 58% of their horses were on Clembuterol. Of course, you're familiar with the New York study, task force study. I've spoken to at least one standard bred trainer who says that approximately 40% of the horses he sees are on this medication. And interestingly, I've actually spoken, we are looking at Albuterol as an alternative. I don't think that's an issue that's been dropped. Speaking to the individual who did the research on Albuterol in Kansas, she indicated that it's 70% effective in five minutes at increasing small airway diameter. So at the September 2013 RMTC board meeting, the USTA, represented by Mr. Phil Langley, raised a number of concerns regarding the impact of RMTC's recommendations on standard bred racing. The concerns were centered around RMTC's recommendations regarding corticosteroids and Clembuterol. The concerns were based on the standard bred's business model of racing weekly, that these medications would no longer be available to breed, or horses would be expected to take additional time off between races. And concerns also included that fewer number of breakdowns of standard bred horses versus other breeds, and these regulations were solving a problem that did not simply exist. As a result of Mr. Langley's presentation, the RMTC board voted to establish an ad hoc committee that included more individuals with greater experience in the standard bred horse than our typical scientific advisory committee. That committee met via teleconference and communicated extensively via email. The result were two white papers, one on Clembuterol and one on corticosteroid regulations. The ultimate statements in these papers were that the thresholds were appropriate for all breeds, because there was no physiologic difference with regard to these medications in horses. This included people who treated specifically standard bred horses in the racetrack. They included surgeons who treated both standard bred and thoroughbred and quarterhorses, as well as regulators who were in charge of states where more than one of these breeds existed, always standard bred and thoroughbreds. So in all ways, the standard bred was represented. At roughly the same time, Dr. Robinson of the University of Pennsylvania and Dr. Soma were asked to provide a report on Clembuterol to the Pennsylvania Racing Commission. And I will submit this for your review, but I'd just like to read the summary. Says, "Clembuterol can be a useful therapeutic drug for treating horses with inflammatory airway disease when used in conjunction with corticosteroids in appropriate rest interval of two weeks. Continuous treatment with Clembuterol is not recommended due to tachyplexia, which is loss of effectiveness. The longer you use it, the less effective it becomes. Anabolic effects termed repartitioning occur and continue with continuous treatment. These effects were detectable after as few as six days, even with the lowest therapeutic dose, which is the .8 micrograms per kg, which is what RMTC recommends, twice daily. Reversal of these effects took a minimum of 11 days after the administration of Clembuterol was discontinued. These manuscripts are in preparation. An alternative bronchodilator is available. Albuterol is an FDA-approved beta-2 adrenergic receptor antagonist that has been shown to be effective for treating horses with inflammatory airway disease. However, lack of compliance with dosing regimen discourages many practitioners from prescribing it as long as Clembuterol is available. Treatment of inflammatory airway disease with environmental modifications in corticosteroids in place of or in addition to bronchodilators is recommended by the ACVIM, which is the American College of Veterinary Internal Medicine Practitioners. Oral corticosteroids are available, for example prednisolone and dexamethasone, and withdrawal information is available for these drugs. Sufficient data on the pharmacokinetics and pharmacodynamics of inhaled corticosteroids is not yet available and deserves further study." So those individuals that are looking at this from a regulatory perspective are on the same page. There are issues with both corticosteroids and Clembuterol and how they affect racehorses, both health and welfare, as well as the effect on the integrity of the sport. Thank you for your time. I've referenced a number of documents in my presentation, and I'll be happy to provide those to you at this time. And if there are any questions, I would welcome them.
I have one question. In the jurisdictions that you mentioned, Minnesota and Pennsylvania in particular, are you aware of any unintended consequences from their shift in regulatory pattern for corticosteroids?
I haven't spoken to anyone in Pennsylvania, but I can tell you in Minnesota, they actually, I believe, had fewer breakdowns this year than they had in the past, both in training and in racing. They have not suffered a loss of horses or participants. They have also had increased purses this last year, so that may also offset some of it. But they have not had any unintended consequences that we are aware of, that have been communicated to me.
I have one question.
Well, you mentioned a standard bred trainer saying a lot of Clembuterol. What state was that?
It was a veterinarian. It was the East Coast.
A veterinarian. Somewhere, can you?
I believe Pennsylvania.
Any other questions?
I said that they have the potential to affect race performance, and it's based on pharmacodynamic studies. For example, if a horse has less pain than it would otherwise without the effect of treatment, or if it has, for example, in the case of Clembuterol, there's the potential to affect performance because it has the anabolic properties.
Yes, you know, as I had first indicated when we opened, I don't really want this to be a debate on the record here. If you would like to continue that discussion, however, you're more than able to after we conclude the hearing.
Oh, and the other thing I'm also providing, there are two medications that we don't have published reports for. I have gotten permission to give you summary graphs of the administration data so that you have an idea of how safe these regulations actually are for horsemen.
To conclude, I'd like to thank all who participated in today's hearing. As previously mentioned, a written record is being prepared of this public hearing, and will incorporate the materials that have been submitted today with testimony and those materials that have been submitted in lieu of testimony. For those who are unable to participate today, the commission will continue to take written submissions as part of the rulemaking process, and they can be submitted through Monday, January 27. Thank you for your attention, and we appreciate you coming. This concludes the hearing.